Is back in session, please govern yourself accordingly. We're going to do item four B, the financial report for June 30th, followed by the fiscal year 17 approved tentative budget. Mr. Steven Bloom will introduce himself, please proceed.
Steven Bloom, Severn Trent. As the chairman mentioned, the financials that you have in your package is through June. That puts you, at least from the financial standpoint, seventy-five percent of the way through your budget. You know, there's a lot of good news in here. When you look at your assessments collected, it's at ninety-nine point five percent collected. When you look at your spending on the general fund by itself, you are under where you would be for your year-to-date budget of about a hundred and fifty thousand. When you look at your revenue even for utility, you're well over where you were last year at this time in terms of billings. Let me give you a page number for that before I... Yeah, sure, page fifty-one.
Steven? The ratio of current homes per income, the factor, are we holding a straight line as we increase the number of...
I'd have to run those numbers for you.
That'd be interesting.
Yeah, because if, when you look at this, you can see prior year is the second to last column. For example, water revenue, last year at this time, you were a little bit under a million dollars in revenue. This year, you're almost, you're at one point one. So it's roughly about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar favorable variance. And when you go down the line, the only thing that you're actually short of last year is penalties, you know, so that's...
Oh, that's good.
That's good. You know, we talk about connection fees, which is kind of, you're not really sure when you're going to get that revenue, but it's good to see each one of those lines having favorable numbers.
It'll be good also to compare the billable product that we're buying versus rolling billing and versus the number of houses and see how those...
I'll work on that matrix.
Would you? That'd be great. Thank you for asking for that, that's very important.
So again, that's really just a kind of a top-level look at it. You know, even when you look at your, the bottom of, this is what, page fifty-three, which shows you your total utility services, which is kind of what you're, look at you from your operations standpoint, right now, you're at fifty-five percent of your budget. Now, a big reason of that is, is when we budget for the wastewater, we budget just in case there's a potential increase in there. So we always budget heavy there. But, you know, even with that, it is good to see a lot of favorable numbers so far through June. Any questions, anything else you want me to cover?
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, anything else for the June 30th financial statement?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda four A and four B.
I'll second.
That motion is a second. Any further conversation on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Five zero, Mr. Manager. Mr. Manager, would you please go to item five F, the fiscal two thousand and seventeen approved budget, and I need to make a statement on that before you start. We had originally scheduled the public hearing and the final adoption on this two thousand and seventeen fiscal year, two thousand and seventeen budget for August the eighteenth, is I believe. Due to unforeseen circumstances, the notice in the paper was not published early enough for us to legally have the public hearing and the final adoption on the July the twenty-second. There is a motion that we are going to consider in a few minutes to move the adoption of that budget to September first, I believe. Is that so?
Yes, sir.
But before we do that, I've been advised by the attorney that we need to ask the residents in attendance, if any of them have anything that they would like to talk to us about regarding the change in the date, that now is the time for them to come to the podium and talk about that issue. Mr.?
You're very well said, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone need to talk to us about the change in the date? Five o'clock, September first. We continue that the way that we did it initially. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
I should have the resolution that I need to read to officially change that, and I don't seem to have it...
I have multiple copies, it's...
Could I at least have...
Yes, sir.
Could I at least have one?
It's attached to the memorandum. If any of the board members want a copy of the memorandum.
I've seen it and read it, but I don't have it in front of me.
It's the last, second page on the memorandum.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, this is a resolution to amend resolution two thousand sixteen oh nine to reschedule the public hearing to adopt the budget for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen. And it reads, whereas the district manager has heretofore prepared and submitted to the board a proposed operating budget for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, and whereas the board supervisors considered said proposed budget and by its resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh nine, set the required public hearing thereon for August eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Whereas in the desire of the board to reschedule the public hearing, then the district manager will cause a notice of public hearing with the new date time and location as outlined below to be published in newspaper of general circulation in Lee County, consistent with the requirements of chapter one ninety, excuse me, chapters one ninety-seven and one ninety of Florida statutes. Now therefore be it resolved by the board of supervisors of the Gateway Service Community Development District that it is the desire of the board to amend this resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh nine, and the board hereby reschedules the public hearing to consider the adoption of the budget for the following date hour and place. Date, Thursday, September first, two thousand and sixteen, hour, five P.M., place, Gateway Services Office Meeting Room thirteen two forty, Griffin Drive. Notice that this public hearing should be published in a manner prescribed by law. May I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
I have a motion?
I second.
And I have a second. Any further conversation? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, five zero.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Will they send out letters?
Yes, new letters will go out and then new notices will be in the newspaper, yes.
Okay.
We're terribly sorry about that, and I just couldn't be helped. Mr. Attorney, am I free to introduce Mr. Steven Bloom to go through the fiscal year subject?
Oh, yes, please.
Mr. Bloom, would you please then continue and review once more version five of the fiscal year seventeen budget?
Okay, so this is version five. There are the significant changes from the last version, mainly it was to two different things. I'm sorry, page...
One nineteen of the agenda.
It starts on, one twenty-four is the first change. The per EAU amount has not changed since was adopted. Really, all the changes here have been between line items that we're talking about. So for example, on the bottom of what, page one twenty-four, the new line was added called other public safety expenses with a hundred thousand dollars, that was taken out of the reserve for capital projects, and that was, you know, per our last discussion on the budget, kind of as a, in case things change and for public safety for that particular department. In addition, for the Pelican Preserve budget, I guess let's reference that page, on the staffing plan, we had talked about removing some allocations for the Pelican Preserve Fund, that is page one forty-three. Natural Resource Supervisor and Facilities Maintenance Specialist, both of those allocations were removed from the budget... And have been zeroed out, basically. And those are really, really the changes that we have. Everything else is the same, all the repairs, the repair and maintenance programs intact, you know, the rest of the staffing plan is the same as in the previous versions. The Pelican Preserve budget is the same, although there could very well be some changes. But other than that, that's really kind of the same as what we've been talking about.
And the assessments are the same as previous?
Assessments are the same. And just kind of as a refresher, since we haven't talked about it, now the general fund is flat, and the big addition and what really will be on the notice letters is the increase related to the state revolving loan and the Fund Zero Zero Six, the Lake Bank Restoration Project. That's, that's the increase.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, do you have questions or changes that you want to make onto this version five? Hearing done, thank you very much, Mr. Bloom. I believe we're at item five A, request approval of the job description for the operations manager. Frank, would you like to take us through this?
Yeah, so as a follow-up to one of the previous board meetings, it was asked that we take the contract structure of what was originally presented and transition that into an at-will employee. So Tony and I worked together along with April to come up with, with the, with the new structure, which is basically, we created a job description, and in doing so, Tony, would you say that there was a new class that was somewhat created?
That's correct, a new class, it's an exempt employee class, general manager.
This is an at-will, an at-will employee. I will say that there's a couple of things for consideration that I'd like to just kind of throw out there before we get into the details, that when we're looking at, at the structure, it was kind of my opinion and based on information that had been provided, that the traditional operations manager position was, was very large. It was almost two roles, two roles kind of wrapped up into one. There was an administrative function and then kind of the utilities, public works. So the concept is to bring April on as the general manager, as part of phase one, and you can read through the descriptions, and then it would be my recommendation to look at, you know, a phase two, once she's on board, at possibly having a parallel or peer position, which would be a public works manager. And Chris could be a viable candidate for that, for that second level, because I think where the gap is, is really around our senior-level leadership-type positions. But I'll stop there and see if there's any additional questions or comments around the description, or, Tony, I both did some, some research on salary ranges, and so I think we came up with a, with a structure, a baseline structure, and this is open for discussion, which was eighty-five to one twenty-five, Tony, if I remember correctly. I've got to pull out the...
Actually, you made it eighty.
Eighty, I believe. Eighty to one twenty-five was the range, and that was based on some local comps as well as some additional research from, from some online job aggregate salary research.
Doug, would it be okay with you if we would restrict our initial discussion to the job description, and after we finish that, hopefully, then we'll talk about the salary range?
Sure, yeah.
So it's two separate parts. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, you have the job description that's been worked on as described, starting on page seventy-five, and if we, hopefully, we can adopt it as is, but if not, then I would like each individual member to indicate the parts that they feel need additional work.
And let me just make one, one quick statement, that this job description, it is organic, so it can change over time as the, as our environment or the district organizational changes, or as the environment changes, so could the job description. So it's not like a specific contract that needs to stay within those terms and conditions. This is an at-will employee, and this description, job responsibilities could change over time.
Yes, but we have to start somewhere.
Yeah, I just, I want to throw that out there, just in case there's questions on, well, this might not be the role in the future, and that's okay, we can change.
Margaret, would you like to start?
No, I'd like to start then at the other end.
Chicken? Ham? Cow? I'd love to, I'd love to be the rapper.
I'm going to give Margaret, or give Pam the floor if she wants to.
I'd like Gary to do it.
Oh, you don't. Doctor, no?
No, mine, mine won't be nuclear, so you, you want to at least get some of yours in there.
Pam?
I guess, you know what, I, it's not the job description that really concerns me at this point, so it's a matter of how we're going about doing this. I think I would prefer...
And we're going about it?
Yeah, yeah, I would prefer to work on an organizational chart before we got into this job description, and since we're doing this for a specific person, I really don't know, you know, I don't really have any input at this point.
The job description is, is the job description.
It's kind of general.
Well, I mean, yeah, but it's the job, and it's, it's, not to say that it's tailored for, for April, but it is the job description that she will come into. And you're right, normally you would go in and you would do, build out an organizational chart and function first, but however, I don't, you know, due to Chris coming in new and April being in a transitional role, I don't think we really have the capability to build out a true organizational chart and function, because I don't think we have that in-depth knowledge. So the concept is to bring April on into this role, have her work with probably Chris to build out the organizational structure and the functional alignment.
And then I'll let Gary do it. The one thing when I read this job description is, it was so generic. One of our major functions here is the utility department and supplying, you know, water and sewer and irrigation to the community, and probably one of our other biggest contracts is, you know, I would say the landscaping and then the lake, and this job description doesn't say anything about that. It's, there's no mention of any of those other responsibilities or any knowledge of them, and that didn't show in me.
Yeah, and I think that's because that, those responsibilities really falls within Chris, running the utility side of the business. And it would be, I mean, not to forecast too much, but it would be my recommendation that the GM covers what's in, what's in this role, and it's a senior-level position, and that we would, as a fast follower to this approval, is to look at creating another new position, which is a public works manager, and if, and the reason why I wouldn't have done this before is because Chris was new in that role, and I think we'd need a time to see what, what his level of experience is. But I would have a parallel position, a peer position, which is a public works manager that, as at this point right now, I would, I would promote Chris to that, to that role as a fast follower, and both of those two individuals, you'd have two senior-level positions, a GM and a public works manager at the top of the house, one covering the administrative side, who has, which would be April, that has some overarching governance over the entire district, but that public works manager would really be responsible for public works, which is utilities, maintenance, and probably natural resources. But they would work together to, to build out the org, org structure. So that's design not being specific to utilities, is a little bit by design, because I think it's two specific roles.
Pam, please say.
I also think it may have been prudent of us to open this up to the public, you know, if we, I think this is a key position, and I think we should have at least interviewed other people for the position. Not to say that April wouldn't finally get it, but I think we should have opened this up to the public. I think this is a very important position for the district, and it's, it's a big step that we're taking, that we're going to hire someone and manage them. So I think there are a lot of things that we haven't covered, and that's why I again go back to, we should have at least started the top layer and approved the top layer of the organizational chart and the job functions. I would have liked to see that.
Leave.
Gary?
I need... You have something?
Let me go back. The reason why April is here is because she was brought to replace Scott Connell, who left and gave us, how many weeks' notice?
Two.
Two. So we were in a tizzy and looking for, probably Severn Trent, let me say it that way, was looking for somebody to try to fill that void that we had. The major problem is the fact that, as Margaret very specifically pointed out and very accurately pointed out, our business is utilities. Not to demean Doug, but to set the record straight, of all of the people that are on the board and that have experienced all the problems that we have, some of us for eight years, et cetera, we've got more experience with the problems that have gone on in this district and that are going on in this district than you do. You may have the business experience, but you don't have it here. Not to make it sound like it's totally punitive to you, but there is no one that sits on this board, and this is something that I've repeated a number of times, even with our eight-years' experience, we don't really know what happens back there and what happens in here. We have some pretty good ideas by the number of people that have left in that office in eight years and seem to keep floating out the door. Margaret can certainly, and Pam can substantiate that, and we're the three of us, four of us, the question marks in our mind of what the heck is going on here? Something's happening there as well. The situation that we have with utilities and all the different things that have gone on in the last eight years, and I'm quoting the eight years because I've been here and I've lived it, we are at a crossroads, a very critical crossroads, where a couple of months ago, there was a very concerted effort to immediately make this choice of changing from a Severn Trent person to a district person, and April, we've got to get her, and the quote from Bill was, "We don't want to lose her." My rude statement in my mind that I didn't quote was, "If she wants to leave, let her go. If she doesn't have a commitment to here, let her go." The problem that we've had with this place in the last eight years is, we need to have someone guide us that actually knows how this business really works. We're five people that are elected by the public, who depend upon us tremendously to guide this horrific budget and to try to make Nichols work, and that's our responsibility. I've mentioned Joe De Cerbo before, and he's the only one that's come across our path, other than other people that might be available at the Florida Association of Special Districts, that really knows how this business works. We can go back and talk to the employees in the back room, et cetera, and get their take on it, but the person that's supposed to guide all this is supposed to be somebody that knows what the goal is and knows how to get there. The person that's got the most experience as far as utilities is concerned is sitting at the end of the room. And to have somebody that doesn't have utilities experience and doesn't have that type of background, and to put them in a position above that person, all that does is make that person say to themselves, "Why am I answering to somebody that doesn't know about the business as much as I do?" Then let's get into the fact of the salary. We were paying eighty-five thousand dollars to Severn Trent, and it was their baby to handle everything. Now you've thrown in numbers, including an annual three percent wage increase. Nothing was in here about having evaluations and quarterly evaluations and et cetera, none of that was emphasized. But the fact of starting, and then, as we talked about in the last meeting, on average, our benefit package is eighteen percent of that person's salary. So we'd be immediately jumping that person into that position with a similar type of situ, of pay scale, plus eighteen percent, and then running it up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Did anybody bother to call the Florida Association of Special Districts and say, "What would be the typical operations manager pay scale for this?" I doubt that anybody did. Then in addition to that, it indicates that we're supposed to be paying for people CPA... I'm sorry, that has nothing to do with that position. And we're supposed to pay for the ongoing education, et cetera, the travel and that, for that? Where is the point to that, other than the fact of a bunch of people out here who trust us to try to make good decisions are having to pay for all of that? Nothing specified, nothing restricted, nothing... We need to go back to square one. We need, as we said before, to tone this thing down, and we said that we were going to see how these two people worked, but instead, it keeps pushing that one in, and, "Hey, Chris, you're doing a great job, but we're going to stack somebody above you. Oh, and we'll think about it in the future." We don't need to think about the future, we need to figure out what we're doing yesterday. And there seems to be this big thing of people not wanting to get somebody in here who is a professional, and if you don't like the name De Cerbo, who is pretty, a great guy, then find somebody in the Florida Association of Special Districts that they recommend and have that person come in and evaluate what we are and what we should be doing, instead of engaging people, making promises to them, but then saying, "And by the way, the whole job description might change in the future." Why? Because we don't know what we're really doing. But yet, we're trying to hire people and push people into something, and we fortunately have somebody that filled the utilities thing that has got a wealth of experience. All you need to do is walk with him out there and have him show you what he's done to the van in the short time that he's been here, that somebody else couldn't figure out how to manage. We're making a mistake.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
I hate to be redundant, and I don't have the statement that I made four weeks ago with me, but I want to remind everybody that in the five and a half years I've been on this board, we have had five, count them, five operations managers. And it's... And if you want to have a short lesson on why things do not work perfectly in a small organization, all you have to do is think about the revolving door of the top person in the organization. April has been with us now for five months, and I think she's done a terrific job. And I think it is time that we acknowledge that she's done a terrific job and approve this job description. And if it is approved, go on and set a salary. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve this job description.
A second.
No, no, I'm looking for a motion.
Oh, you need the motion. I'll make the motion.
Here's your second.
I will second it for further discussion, because I think this job description is weak for what the district needs.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We've heard from that side of the table, do you want to make any further direct comments?
To me, just like Doug said, this job description is strictly administration. And if it were an administrative general manager, this, I wouldn't have no problems with this job description. But our business is the utilities. We've got this huge lake bank restoration project coming up. We're still working on trying to get the meters replaced. That's, you know, I have every confidence that April can handle the administrative and the billing, because that's, your background is financial. But this position really requires more than that, if they're going to be in charge of the front office and the back office.
Yeah.
And the back office is left out of this job description.
Yeah, and I think maybe what the solution is, and the way I envision it, and it's hard to lay that out within the board, because we can't communicate and we can't share ideas. But I envision the top of the house, the senior leadership, to be two department heads. One is the general manager and the other is the public works manager. Because I think we do have administrative shortfalls with billing, with just all the stuff that we have to deal with today. And I think it's too much for one person, for one operations manager, who is really a utility person, that may not have the background experience on running the administrative side. So it might be more prudent, and I didn't do it along with this particular job description, because that, the scope of the work was to take that contract and convert it into an FTE. So I think what might be more prudent is to, if the board agrees, is to look at actually having two peer positions. One is the public works manager, and the other is the GM. And having both those positions reported to the board. So what you get is you get your utilities and public works engineer, and you also get someone that is the general manager, which is handling all the administrative functions. So if you split it, it would be administrative, which is the office, customer service, community relations, community development, and probably parks and rec. And then the public works would be natural resources, utilities, and maintenance. I mean, to me, that makes the most sense.
And the contracts for the lake bank restoration and all that.
And then you have those to build out the rest of the org alignment. And that gives you growth for today, as well as what it would look like down the road.
Can you prepare a...
But in order to do that, I don't think it had, I wouldn't feel comfortable taking this back personally myself and doing it alone. I think if we want to do this collectively as a board, there has to be a workshop that we collectively sit around, because the biggest thing that I'm hearing, and kind of since I've come on board, is we have no unified sense of direction. We, I don't think we really understand what our district goals are, what we feel like the organizational structure should look like. I mean, the fact that we're coming now and saying, "We should be looking at other people, we should be doing these things." I know I was brought on board sometime in May, and we could have easily said in May that we need a workshop to hash this out, or we could have said in May, we voted to open the description up to other people. We have gone on for meeting after meeting and just keep prolonging this, and our district is the one that's, you know, that's being penalized for our lack of movement. That's just my opinion. But I think we need a workshop in order for us to get where we need to be collectively, so we can all put our input in, and at the end of the day, say, "This is where, this is what we need," and we can have April and even Chris sit in on that meeting to help us draft out what that structure looks like.
I have a motion and a second to approve this job description for the general manager. Further conversation, the board members that wants to be heard. Hearing none on favor of the job description, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Opposed?
Okay, let's have your hands. All in favor, say aye. Two.
I'm sitting on the fence on this.
You got to make difference.
I'm here, I know I need it. I would be fine with this job description for talking about the structure that Doug is suggesting, but that's not what we've got in front of us.
Can we approve the job description and also look to build out the public works manager as a parallel?
Why are we pushing to do that?
We've been working on this for months.
Bill, that's right, Bill. You tried to ram this thing through in the initial meeting after that, and you did everything, and you prepared, you had Tony, and you had all this other stuff that you had, and that unilaterally, you, one person.
That is not so, and you...
Well, yeah, you got together with April, that's true, and you got together with Tony, but not one of that part...
I do remember that.
No, no, excuse me. Now it's my turn. You didn't discuss any part of that preliminarily with the board in any way, shape, or form. Then you kept trying, then we had Doug come on board, then you had the allegiance with Doug. We've got, as Margaret pointed out, and I'll remind Margaret, the overwhelming job of this thing is, and the overwhelming income Stephen's here, it's irrefutable, is the utilities. To have a utilities person that's bringing in the lion's share of our income and responsibility either be unilateral with a person that's managing the office? A staff, we had to ask last time, how many people are going to be over at that other building if that tries to...
That's beside the point.
No, I'm sorry, don't interrupt me, Bill.
It is beside the point. I'm interrupting you, you're out of order.
Don't do the odd scene thing. You added, "Out of order"?
I'm commenting. The discussion is on the job description, period.
No, the discussion is, is in the motion and the thing. And Margaret pointed out before, the primary position, the primary function of this CDD is utilities. He's the guy with utilities that maybe...
You have made that point over and over again.
Correct.
That's enough.
It's irrefutable. Margaret?
Mr. Chairman, the motion, when we started this discussion before a motion was made, this was not discussing the salary range that's in here. So it's the job description less the salary range, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that the motion maker, and I as the second, understood that.
It's just the job description, that is correct.
Okay.
Again, I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Three. Opposed? One. Pam?
I'm opposed.
Three to two, motion's carried. Thank you very much. That's right.
Get us down the road.
Down the road, that's right.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I would revise this when we finalize it, take off that first sentence at the bottom of page two, under salary and benefits.
Where are you, please, Tony?
Page two, it's under salary and benefits, the first sentence has the salary range. As I understand it, the job description was approved with that sentence.
With the, I think the range is included in the job description.
The range is included in the job description.
Correct.
And it probably, as difficult as it's going to be, we probably ought to consider the initial salary for the position.
I thought I just heard Mr. Finley, maybe I misunderstood, saying it's minus...
I thought that we were approving the job description without the salary range in it.
Correct, that was my understanding.
Okay, all right, that's fine, okay.
Because you wanted to come back to that later.
I wanted to come back to the salary later.
Okay, all right. I thought you meant to come back to the salary itself, not necessarily the range.
That's what it is, but that's okay.
Because now we're talking about splitting up, because you're taking, you're taking the operations manager, and you're splitting it into two jobs.
Yep, right.
So...
That doesn't necessarily mean you're splitting the salary range in half.
Right, and I understand that, but if they're on equal level, we're looking at paying two different people eighty thousand dollars if we were to take...
If we feel it's two, two parallel experienced roles. But they don't have to be parallel, you can have some variance, but I think if you were to look at it, you'd have two senior level positions classed as, what is it, what is the class, Tony?
Just an exempt class manager.
Exempt class.
We can have a separate class for the utility manager, one for the upper...
You could have a salary range for the GM as one thing, and the public works manager range at something completely different, depending on, depending on what you feel like the level of experience is. And they could still be parallel. If you run into a little bit of problem with, if you skew too far, when you've got...
Right, and that was where my thought process was going, because we hadn't considered that previously, although I can see the logic of it, because to find one person that has knowledge and experience in both is, you're almost asking for the impossible, or you're going to have to pay them a much higher salary.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
To get someone good with that experience.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Doug, would we be better off, since we have a job description, to not worry about the range right now and just appoint April to this job at a, at a specific salary and then come back at the next meeting and with a job description for the utility manager and a salary?
Well, I think the idea was to establish a range for, just for precedent.
I understand that, if we, I know, and we can get there maybe later on, but we've got to get...
I understand what you're saying. So you want to, you want to bypass the range and just land on a...
Number right now.
On a number. I mean, we could do that, I mean, it's, it...
It's been difficult enough to get to where we are.
Yeah, I mean, and then I guess we can establish the range at another point. Doesn't really make sense to do that, but... So are we...
Because beyond this, we have to, we didn't bring back, I don't believe, in this, changing the management company contract that was in a previous board book.
That's right. There is, right, there is a lot more of the...
Many steps here.
But...
Yep, and I think part of that in the conversation with Cal's departure, I think it gives, and we've got a contract negotiation, renewal negotiation coming up next year. I also think it's an opportunity for us to look at roles and responsibilities with Severn Trent and what may be either absorbed through the GM slot, either, you know, temporarily or long term. But again, that's, you know, that's why that job description has a little variance in it from a, it's not A, B, C, D, E. So Bill, are you saying the next step is to make a recommendation on salary?
That's what I'm thinking. That would be the next step, so we've got April on board at a specific salary. Then we'll come back with a job description for the utility manager, and if we, once we get agree to that, with a salary for that position. And as Margaret so correctly said, adjustment in Severn Trent's contract. But we're not going to get it all done tonight.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, also, the memorandum also references, have to do some modifications to the employee manual also, because the term operations manager shows up throughout, but that's just one of those...
You did need to bring that up.
Well, that should be done after...
It can be, it can be a global, simple sentence.
And we can do that after, if the public works manager is approved, we can do it in unison.
Can you give us a number to start with?
Well, again, the initial range was eighty to one-twenty-five. That was kind of based on some research that I'd done. It doesn't include everything that's available, because I just didn't have access to that information, I guess.
Honestly, I think we've approved this general job description, and I think the next step for us going forward really is a workshop, where we actually, you're right, hash out, what do we want to see our structure look like?
And I don't know if everybody on the board has the exact salary of both individuals at this point, so...
We got to pay her something.
I know, I'm saying what we're paying her now.
We're not paying her anything.
She's working for free.
Severn Trent. Severn Trent will pay.
Well, with her salary from Severn Trent.
I don't even know what it is.
We can find that out, can we find that out?
You don't know what it is.
I know they just...
I know what we're paying, you don't know?
I know, yeah, they just increased...
We paid them, but they pay her salary.
Well, we're talking about going eighty plus another eighteen. We're talking about a hundred and fourth, or ninety-four thousand dollars. So we're bumping up from Severn Trent, nine thousand dollars, as to what we're paying them now, and they're handling all the benefits, et cetera. In addition to that, in your job description, you have her having the capability of hiring and firing all the utility people.
Not the utility manager.
Everybody but the utility manager. Now, you're talking about putting people on a level plane. Why would she have the capability of hiring his employees? Does that mean he gets to fire the people in the office?
Well, I think that would, when the public works manager job description is created, that would be changed.
That's, I think that's why, I mean, that's why I voted against it, because I think we're just not there yet. We need, it's not that I'm against hiring April, but I just think that if we're going to bring these two people on, then we need to have it written out specifically, who's going to do what, whose job is going to be what, and what they're going to be responsible for. And I know we're not, we're not able to make that decision today, but we need to work on it. And if we can't work on it, I do agree with Gary, since we're having this problem with Severn Trent and Cal is leaving now, I do think maybe we should have Joe De Cerbo or someone come in and evaluate these two people, because that's something that we cannot do, and evaluate these two people and tell us what they think their recommendations are. We paid this man to do this, and we're not taking advantage of it.
You know, I'm not exactly sure what the, what's being asked. Either we're prolonging, I mean, I would at least like for alternatives, just...
Well, can you imagine the dissension? You also have written in here that she has the right to give us the recommendation to terminate him, but he has no right to do anything if he finds out.
Well, he's not, as it sits right now, and again, this is an iterative, this is an iterative process. This is an iterative process, which starts us with a position of general manager.
Throw something in without having it correct.
Garrett, you had an opportunity to provide input on this.
I'm giving it to you.
Well, today's the day, but we, it's not like this is the first time this has been talked about. We've been talking about it for three months. So I, you know, I did what was in scope, what I felt, what the organization needs. If you don't... If you don't like it, that's fine, I don't take it personally, I just did what, what I felt the, the board wanted and what the, the district needed based on conversations with, with April and staff and looking at Joe De Cerbo's report, what he felt like the gaps were, and, and so my recommendation's based on research and what my input is. If you don't like it, we don't have to vote for it, that's fine, let's figure out a way how we can get from here to where we need to be, which is...
Have your workshop and have De Cerbo here. Have somebody that's an expert rather than us bickering.
Doug, we need to set a salary. Will you make a recommendation?
No, I won't, I think there's four other people on this board that can take the next step and come up with a recommendation. You know what the pay scale is, we probably should all have an idea on what we want to pay a GM in this position. I don't think it's going to pass, but, I mean, we can take a, take a stab at it, but I think there is a larger picture that I think we're missing a little bit.
Margaret, you want to make a recommendation for salary?
I don't, what, you said we're missing a bigger picture, tell me what your bigger picture is.
Well, I think the bigger picture is that the GM role is, is really a start. It's a, it's a side component to what Gary has mentioned, and I think we're all very aware that core, one of the core competencies of what we do is utilities. And I think we need to have not just a utilities manager, I think we need to have someone that is over maintenance, public works. But even if, let's just say hypothetically that that's Chris, based on what I've seen and what I've heard from others, the guy is exceptional at, at what he's been able to do in a short amount of time. But I don't know if, if Chris, and I don't know if I would even ask him or a public works person to handle all the administrative functions. So in my opinion, it should be two positions, and I think we failed in the past by having an option manager try to do all these things. So that way they haven't really excelled in, in any one area, they're just putting out fires. So when I say we're missing the big picture, what I mean is, the first step is to build out our top level organizational structure. Our two senior leadership positions, which represent our functional areas, which is general manager, which is the administrative side, and then public works manager, which is utilities and maintenance. But if we can get the GM position in place and then fast follow it with the public works manager, those two can hash out what the org looks like and everything underneath. And I think April and Chris may have already had some conversations around this, and I didn't get a chance to talk to Chris to see if he's in alignment with that thought process, but, you know, that's kind of what I, you know, what I would perceive.
Okay, so I understand when you put this together, you had one, one thing in mind, and now we're coming back and changing. So is there a way that we can change what, I know you guys just approved this, but we probably need to work on the job description, make it workable for both individuals.
Yeah, and keep in mind too, when, when we started this, Chris wasn't here, that position was vacant. So we had a utilities position, and I think we're, you know, again, through conversation, we're starting to kind of see, at least in my mind, I see a bigger picture now, today than I did, you know, a couple of months ago. So I, it's more clear to me that, you know, those two roles are critical to have. That's why I think, I know we're trying to get this through, and, and I hate to keep prolonging this, because I think there's, there's work that could be done if, if April was sitting in more of a permanent role, but, you know, either we do a workshop or someone look at building out what that public works manager role would look like in parallel to the GM role, that would be my recommendation. And I think if we can look at them unilaterally, it will help us tell the much bigger picture and align the stars a little bit, so it makes more sense on where, you know, where the roles and responsibilities start and stop. But again, I think until those two, two people are in that role, we won't get that second layer of alignment, we won't really understand what our resource allocation or our gaps are today and where they may need to be in the future. So where do we go?
I think we need a workshop. I mean, at this point in time, what we've done is, all we've done is create a job description for the general manager. And it, now it's sitting there in the structure, but it really, we haven't... I think that there's probably some tweaking that that needs, and we need to consider this other position and how much we are planning on paying these two individuals. And we have to look at them at the same time, it isn't a matter of, okay, now we've created this position, now we need to fill it and we need to pay this much. Because we're, we're looking at a brand new idea here of this being split into two, and I agree with you, I think that it should be split into two, but we could end up getting our, boxing ourselves into a corner too with salaries that we need to be really careful about.
Yeah, I understand that.
Well, I have heard a lot of ideas here and how to move this forward, I'm not quite sure, except whether we're going to have a workshop or whether we're not going to have a workshop. We always need somebody to do the background work for us to consider. You know, you don't want to start with a plain piece of paper and try and build it. You have to have somebody give you some ideas to, to start with, and we've had a lot of ideas today, but how we're going to get from where we are to where we need to be, I'm not quite sure. Especially when we have somebody who is unhappy because one person tries to do some work and, and bring it forward, which is a, an idea I absolutely cannot understand. So would the board members like for someone, yet to be named, to work on a job description for a utilities manager?
Yeah.
Okay, there's one. Doug, would you like, would you like somebody to work on a job description for utilities manager?
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea to have these two in parallel as a starting point.
Pam, would you like for somebody to work on it?
Yes.
Gary, would you like for somebody to work on it?
Somebody that has the expertise to work on it, somebody that has...
Just tell me yes or no, we're worried, we're worried about trying to get, you've got to do it in a minute.
For all I know, you may have my dog do it, for crying out loud, I'm talking about somebody that's got the expertise. Baxter is pretty good, he's sharp, stop by and pet him sometime. But in any case, we need somebody, Florida Association of Special Districts is the obvious one that's got the expertise. This is a unique situation, that's why they're there. And we have somebody that's actually run one of these things, but you seem to fear having that gentleman sit down and tell you reality.
Do you want somebody to put together a prospective job description for a utility manager?
Yeah, and I want to remove the thing in here that says that the general manager has the right to fire all the utility employees, and they're supposed to be a utility manager.
And that, that's completely understandable.
Okay, and that she has the right, or he, or who has the right to undermine that, that co-level and report to the board why we should terminate that person.
Okay. Somehow or other, we will get a job description for a utility manager in front of the board, hopefully at the next meeting. I think it is best if we go on to the next item on the agenda.
So we're, we're moving forward with a public works, and I think it's a public works manager job description to be presented in parallel with a general manager position. With the, the general manager amendments, needed amendments in order to, again, to, to work unilaterally with the public works manager role. So we, you're saying we don't need a workshop, we're going to have those two job descriptions, and we'll, the, the recommendation would be to approve both those job descriptions with a salary range for both and either hire or promote individuals into those two roles.
We also need to argue out the salary and benefits. There is no way that I'm going to approve the fact of somebody going and we're paying, they're paying to maintain their CPA, that's below.
Well, we would, we would, wouldn't we want to...
No, it's generalized.
I mean, if there was, I mean, if there was a certification in any other position, wouldn't we pay for them to be certified in those positions as well?
Why don't you pay for my real estate license, for crying out loud, you know?
Well, because we don't, we don't employ you for that.
Maybe we should have a workshop, because it's, I think that we all get to discuss what, what we're going to move forward on, and then you're not doing work and then coming and expecting that we will approve something when we're just now going over it, you know? So I think maybe we should have a workshop and talk about how this works with Severn Trent and the monies that are going to be used for both people. I think this is something we all need to talk about, because it's something that the residents are going to have to pay for.
We need to twist Stephen's arm to find out what the real amount is that Severn Trent pays. We need, we, you know, we need, we need a plateau there, Stephen.
You're talking about us releasing salaries, I don't think they're going to do that.
Okay, we're going to try and somehow or other get, get, get a job description for a utility manager. Let's go on to the next item. What have we got? Five B, request approval for expenditure of the storm pipe cleaning in Stony Brook and Silver Lakes. April, do you want it?
Excuse me? I'm sorry.
Five B. Request approval of fifteen hundred and fifty thousand for storm pipe cleaning in Stony Brook and Silver Lakes.
Okay, this is coming before you to continue on with the pipe cleaning. We had, we've already done an open PO like this for the Pelican pipe cleaning. We contracted with Metower Environmental, and so they've been, they've been working on the Pelican side, and so now this, this is for the large pipe, and this is the continuation we've done that we've, we've cleaned the pipes relative to the road turnover, and this is the next phase that had already been designated in the original plan of cleaning the pipes. One of the things that we're doing with Extreme Divers is this, this quote and expenditure approval request includes videoing before and after of the pipe and also some specific repairs that may be necessary. And if we want more details, Tyler is also here and prepared to speak to this request.
May I have approval to, a motion to approve this item five B?
So moved.
Second? Motion and a second, do you need any further conversation? The July twenty-seventh memo from Danny seemed to be pretty clear cut. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve, opposed, five zero, Mr. Manager. Five C is request approval of expenditures for holiday community decorations.
Okay, this one, staff was struggling a little bit when we went out to get the proposals for this holiday decorations. Prices have gone up this year, so we received three proposals, twenty-one thousand, five oh four, sixteen thousand, and the thirteen thousand, four forty-five. Of course, we started researching Tropex, which is the thirteen thousand, four forty-five, and we've got, we sent, we requested four references, and two of, two of the organizations, the person that could speak to this particular company was no longer available. But we received two very good references for Tropex, and we believe that what they have to offer and their abilities is better, better fit for the community than any of them, and that they do happen to be the least expensive.
May I have motion for approval?
And that's apples to apples, the type of lights?
They have some pretty sophisticated technology.
I'm just waiting for the end, but...
So, so I know staff had researched, you know, they, they, some, we did have some problems last year with the events, so we made sure that those were covered. They do have some pretty sophisticated technology as far as how they power their lights and being able to detect the lights that are out.
And that's fine, I was just making sure that it's apples to apples as far as what they're providing.
There is a contingency, and it's going to be with all of them, that based on our power supply, you know, we have to provide them with power.
I don't need anything further, thank you.
Motion for approval?
April, how much did we pay for decorations last year?
I think it was like nine thousand.
Nine thousand.
Yeah.
My recollection is that there were some contributions from local vendors for some of those decorations. Did you talk to L or anybody about that?
Yes, the staff, the staff makes a, a great strides in collecting contributions for the overall event. So yes, we do get some contributions to, you know, defer the overall cost to the events.
That's the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, though. This is just for overall decorations, correct?
Right, correct.
I still haven't had a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, any further conversation?
I should say, motion to approve Tropex.
Why are there two different numbers in here? Why do we have thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five and another thing that says three thousand, four hundred and fifty?
Where are we looking at exactly?
Well, if you take a look at the purchase order form, it says thirteen thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. If you go to the next page, Holiday Decorators, page one and page two says three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Ten thousand dollar difference, what's going on?
They have three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for the install fee, and...
So it's sixteen thousand?
And then the nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars they have on the quote, and that's a total of thirteen thousand, four forty-five.
What's the nine thousand, where is that at?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly how they're, they are using their own form.
Well, shouldn't we know?
I mean, they have all of the details of the, of the trees and stuff that they're decorating.
Yeah, but that's three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Let's see, there's more detail.
Ten thousand dollars less.
Are you saying that?
I'm saying it's in the bottom, the bottom left.
You know what, you know what it is, I believe, I believe it's the lift equipment. It could, it could be the lift equipment.
Here?
I mean, they...
This is the difference.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't actually...
But there's no breakdown on that. This is the breakdown on the other one.
I believe it's, I believe it's the lift equipment, and I'm, and I'm not sure, maybe they don't have, maybe they don't have a total area of the form, of the form, but that's the quote that they gave us, is the thirteen thousand, four forty-five. And I do know a, a large section does require their lift equipment.
We're paying ten thousand dollars for the labor.
I'm not sure if it's built into that, or if it's the three thousand, four fifty is the extra lift equipment, but the total of the, of the estimates of the quote that they gave us is the thirteen thousand, four forty-five, those two numbers.
I have a motion and a second for approval, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, five zero. We've already done five B. Five E, the approved utility expenditure for purchase of a trailer-mounted bypass pump.
She maker utilities department approve expenditure for purchase of a trailer-mounted bypass pump, and there's two specific reasons for, for this pump. If you have a lift station, panel, or motors, and pumps go down, you can bring this in and run it in a bypass operation to keep the station up and running, or use it in hurricane or emergency situations. And also if you're doing work on a station where you have to take the panel down, you can use it for maintenance purposes to keep the station up and running while you're doing work on the panel and controls, and the DEP... work on the panel and controls. And the DEP likes to see you have this type of equipment, knowing you're prepared to respond in emergency situations. And we got a very favorable price with it, piggybacking on the Florida Sheriff's Association. Original quote we had was a little over $56,000, and we showed them some different quotes from Boynton Beach and City of Treasure Island that was down in the $50,000 range from the FSA, and they're going to honor that and let us piggyback on that. And it will also include a training for staff on how to use the equipment.
Stephen, where would that be in the budget?
It's going to come out of your capital fund and the enterprise. It's actually the budget for, was it $75,000?
Yes.
So, we're only going to use $51,000.
So, since we've got some spare cash, don't you need a jack for the spare tire?
Well, that, that's a good point. I'd, I'd get, get them to throw in a security hitch for the tongue.
So, let's get a jack on that thing, actually.
And we'll have, I have a lock for it. And the original intention, too, with the additional budget money, was fencing, you know, to have at one of the lift stations so you could park it inside there. But we'll have security equipment on it, tire lock and also a tongue lock on the front.
And a jack.
Yes, sir.
May I have a motion for approval?
With a jack, yes.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Hello, Pam and Mr. Newbauer, motion and a second with a jack. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. We're ready for staff reports. District Council?
Yeah, I've just provided to you today a copy of a writing from Neil Montgomery, I guess I'll call it that. Just for your information purposes, I'll be working with staff to respond. And I'm just not sure as to why all of a sudden there's that big push after, one of the areas under consideration, we sent them a memo back in November 2012. So, that's nothing further to report. One other, oh, one other item I think we need to address today, though, is Kale Teague is listed as the primary person under the contract with Severn Trent. And so, that needs to, I don't know if there's been a primary person designated or discussed since Kale is, is leaving. What day is it? August 12?
August 12.
So, we need to come up with another primary person and then amend the contract appropriately. So, I'm not sure if that's something that is in the works and needs to be talked before the board the next board meeting.
Yes.
I don't?
Yes, sir.
District Engineer, Building and Construction Review. That's you.
Do you want to go over this today?
So, so-
Just the, just the Girl Scout?
Yeah. He gave us a, well, he's just going to, he's just going to give us his report if we're not going to necessarily do anything further, since we don't seem to be in a very collegial mode. Would you just quickly tell us what you've given us in the-
Quickly, I, I sat here for three hours. I get my chance. For the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech District Engineer. Yes, I can make this very brief. This is simply a continuation of the Girl Scout. At the last beating, the board direction was to look to see if, if we could work with a contractor to do a cursory review before the board would consider it further. I immediately reached out on Friday to Rob Fowler of Fowler Construction, and we arranged for Monday to meet with the Realty Agent from Remax. And again, this was a cursory review. Keep in mind that if you, you know, did a full-blown inspection, they would do more than just kick the tires. But, you know, we did some, also some research online. Did find out that the roof was replaced about 10 years ago to date, so it's a relatively, probably about middle of its life for that type of roof. Can't really tell the exact condition as it's, you know, it's covered by the canopy of trees. But, bottom line, Rob did not see anything off the surface that was, you know, out of the ordinary for a building of this, of this age. So, we went back for board's direction also and revised the estimate for this building as well as for the other building, kind of breaking it down a little more detail. Also, keeping in mind, that is, you know, not based on a design. It's based on our, you know, visual, seeing what's there and, and just kind of estimating. So, on, on the Girl Scout, the, what we did is we, we broke into yellow highlighted and blue highlighted items, the yellow being items that at a minimum need to be done. The blue are, are optional items. Some of that also for saving costs includes moving existing equipment from this facility to that facility. For instance, the dais and the audio, visual equipment would be relocated. Some of the cosmetic items that aren't necessary, you know, you could do. So, it's part of it would be in à la carte. There are things you would need to do and things that, you know, we might recommend that you do. We also then went back and looked at this space and, and, you know, a couple of the items that weren't considered previously were displacement of staff with this option. So, we added a cost in there for some temporary trailers. Also, you know, with the option of this facility, we had mentioned before that you would, you would need to add parking, which our recommendation would be that storage facility should be relocated. So, the last item you have at the back is a figure of what one option could be. You've got about two and a half acres back behind the dog park and the soccer complex, and that adds about 100 spaces with, you know, with that particular layout. And, and, in my opinion, our opinion, is if you do this facility, that has to be done. I would say regardless of if you expand this facility or if you even consider the Girl Scout, I would recommend separating out your storage from this site to away from here, just simply because of security reasons of having individuals from your community having access to this site while, while nobody's present at nights or weekends because they have full access to this if they have a, if they have a slot. So, anyhow, that being said, that's my short synopsis.
And what is it? What's the cost of it, 55?
For, I, for that, I think it was, I think it's on here. Yes, 55.
55.
Yes. And again, that's primarily if you put a fence around there, we wouldn't, we'd recommend just, you know, a gravel access drive, which you'd have some clearing and grubbing and primarily fencing, and, you know, a security gate and that sort of thing.
I think we'd take in 15K annually now for the space, and that would probably multiply it by four, so we could pay for that expansion the first year.
And as I understand, you have a waiting list of, of residents who are looking to use the space. So, you, in my opinion, you gain, you gain access, you gain control of your security of this facility, and, and you, you provide a, a better use for your, your residents. So, anyhow, do you have any questions?
Hey, we dismissed Danny? You were dismissed. Thank you very much. District Manager, do you have anything else?
I have nothing at this point.
Operations Manager, do you have anything else for it?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Kamash, Doug?
Nope.
Margaret?
I just wanted to inquire about the TECO, see any, if we've made any progress on that?
Yeah, I can probably update you on that. Tyler Wainwright with Tetra Tech. TECO hired a consultant to do their design plans of running the gas line. They sent over a draft set of plans to us a month ago, maybe something like that. We reviewed them. We gave them comments. We notified them where there's some conflicts, stuff like that. So, they're in the process of revising their plans and going through permitting with the county. They're probably realistically still two months out from construction. So, that's where they're at.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Ben?
I'm done.
Gary?
Nope.
Anything else for the good? Penny, Penny? We are adjourned. Thank you for all very much.